I'd like to call the Monday, January 7, 2019 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please? Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here. And may I have a report on the minutes of our December 10 regular session and work session, Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings and I found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so ordered. This is a great night tonight in the city of Oakwood. We have two public safety officers that we are going to give the oath of office to, and the first one is Chris Sloan, and what I'm going to ask if Chris wants to come down here, I'll administer the oath, and then I think Chief Hill will have some comments talking about Chris, and then also like to enter, recognize his family who is here tonight witnessing this. His wife Brandy is here, where are you Brandy? In the back, there you go, and then daughter Julia, see her, and then son Kale, did I pronounce that correct?
Yeah.
Kale, okay, and then also I believe your sister-in-law Rebecca and your nephew Owen are also here, and your brother who is an existing Oakwood Public Safety Officer, Justin Sloan is here. Where's Justin? Are you hiding in the back? There you go, great. So, oh, I'm sorry, and can't forget mom-
Mom and dad.
-mom and father-in-law Larry and Diana Harris, where are they? Okay, so I'm going to come down and administer the oath if any of you would like to come up and join him while we do the oath, that would be more than appropriate, so. TV, and Brian will take your picture, so if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and of the state of Ohio-
And of the state of Ohio.
...and will obey the laws thereof-
And will obey the laws thereof.
...and that I will, in all respects-
And I will, in all respects-
...uphold and enforce-
Uphold and enforce.
...the provisions of the Charter-
The provisions of the Charter.
...and ordinances of this city-
And ordinances of this city.
...and will faithfully discharge-
And will faithfully discharge.
...the duties of public safety officer-
The duties of public safety officer.
...upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Before I talk about Chris here for a second, you know, I'm going to make a general statement about the two new additions to our department, Chris and Ryan. You know, once again, we're very fortunate to add two valuable new assets to our department that's going to strengthen us, and you'll hear, when you hear a little bit about their backgrounds, they each bring their own unique perspective, certifications, and experience to our department. Here specifically with Chris, he was born and raised in the Dayton area, he's a graduate at Tecumseh High School, and a recent graduate of Sinclair Community College with an associate's degree in applied science. I think to be commended for that, to be eighteen, twenty years into this career and go back and pursue that education is to be admired. Chris joins us today, literally today is his start date, from the Mason Police Department, where he has worked since 2013. Prior to that, he worked for twelve years as a firefighter paramedic with the city of Fairborn. Chris comes to us with a tremendous amount of public safety experience. You know, a lot of us have stood in this position where we possessed fire, paramedic experience, or a significant amount of law enforcement experience, but I'll say to you, Mayor, Council, he's probably the most qualified public safety applicant we've had in the history of this organization. Eighteen years of full-time experience covering all three facets of the job, and that's unique to us. With that being said, during his time at the Mason Fire Department, he worked several assignments, and his, at the time of separation, he was one of three officers assigned to the Traffic Division, and he rode a motorcycle for a living in the city of Mason, so it's going to be a little bit different assignment for him coming here. He possesses a significant amount of certifications to include, he's a certified accident reconstructionist. We currently do not possess an accident reconstructionist, a fully certified reconstructionist on the department, and we're bringing that into our organization through a lateral entry, so, and then he's also a field training officer. Due to his time away, separation from the fire service, Chris will have to attend the Fire Academy here in late February, but he will admit, he's looking forward to that, but he will immediately begin starting his FTO program tomorrow, and he'll be functioning as a police officer and a paramedic up until that time, and with that, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Chris, and good luck, welcome.
And our next public safety officer that we're going to give the oath of office to tonight is Ryan Wells, and Ryan, here comes Ryan, and your wife Beth is also here. Beth, would you like to come up? And then I think you have a couple daughters, Haley and Mia, is that correct? Come on up here, guys, all right, and you also may have some in-laws and close friends here as well, or not?
Parents.
Okay, these are the parents, how are you? Welcome. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I solemnly swear-
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and of the state of Ohio-
And of the state of Ohio.
...and that I will obey the laws thereof-
And that I will obey the laws thereof.
...and that I will, in all respects-
And that I will, in all respects-
...uphold and enforce-
Uphold and enforce.
...the provisions of the Charter-
The provisions of the Charter.
...and ordinances of this city-
And ordinances of this city.
...and will faithfully discharge-
Will faithfully discharge.
...the duties of public safety officer-
Duties of public safety officer.
...upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
A little bit about Ryan, Ryan was born and raised in Michigan, he's a graduate, graduate of Beaufort High School in Temperance, Michigan. He joins us from the Waynesville Police Department, where he has worked since 2013. During Ryan's time at Waynesville, he worked in several different facets of law enforcement, and his responsibilities included general patrol, traffic crash investigation, and criminal investigation. Coming from a smaller community, one thing that was evident about Ryan during the hiring process, he's very familiar with working in a community our size, and he understands the expectations that goes along with it. Working in a community the size of Oakwood is dramatically different than working in a larger community, and Ryan understands the quality of life issues and things that he dealt with on a day in and day out basis in Waynesville really parallels to what we do here in Oakwood. At the time of his separation, Ryan was a certified school resource officer, working inside the schools on a daily basis for the Waynesville School District. It's another unique aspect for us here, although we do have one dare officer, we've never actually had somebody come on board that has worked full-time in the schools and the challenges that go with that, and it's a specialized certification, and it's a valuable asset, again, that we're going to be able to add to our department. In addition to be a school resource officer, he was also a certified bike patrol officer. Prior to getting into law enforcement, Ryan worked in the fitness industry as a certified personal trainer, so hopefully he'll keep the department in shape as we go forward, and Ryan recently completed the Fire Academy in December. He is in the process of completing his FTO program now, and he's off to EMT school next week for five weeks, and then he'll come back late February. So Ryan, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We have another person we want to recognize here in a minute. Dr. Richard Garrison, MD and MS, where is Richard? I already can see you. Yes, please go, come down to the podium. I'd like to read this on behalf of the community. Dr. Garrison served as the Oakwood Safety Department Medical Director from 1983 until 2009. This was a volunteer position. Throughout his twenty-six years as medical director, Dr. Garrison graciously volunteered his time to ensure that Oakwood maintained an excellent and highly regarded emergency medical program. He provided oversight of the EMS services, delivered by the Oakwood Public Safety Department, and guided the department in steadily improving the quality of the medic response and pre-hospital care. Dr. Garrison worked with the Safety Department staff on developing and implementing a quality assessment and quality improvement program, with the goal of continuous improvement in meeting the emergency medical needs of the Oakwood community. Dr. Garrison was appointed as Oakwood's Health Commissioner on January 1, 2008. As Health Commissioner, he provided administrative and professional leadership and counsel to the city's health department. Dr. Garrison worked with the Oakwood Board of Health, city staff, and officials from Oakwood City Schools in addressing the health issues around the community. He also interfaced with officials from public health Dayton and Montgomery County, and from the Ohio Department of Health. Dr. Garrison served the city of Oakwood with distinction for thirty-five years. His passion for service and keen understanding of the needs of the Oakwood community was recognized in all his work and made him an invaluable asset to this city of Oakwood. I believe City Manager Kloppswich wants, wishes to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to add a few comments. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with Dr. Garrison. We had a, an opportunity to recognize Dick at our employee holiday luncheon back a few weeks ago, presented him with a couple gifts, he's an aviation buff, and so they were Wright Brothers themed gifts, and we hope he appreciates those in his retirement, but much like serving on city council, and you know this, the amount of money that is, is paid to the person that serves in the Health Commissioner position here is, is very, very nominal, and in fact you don't do this job and take on the responsibility as a Health Commissioner for a community and a local health district unless you really are committed to public service, and Dr. Garrison, as you, as you read, Mayor, in the medical director role clearly did it in a voluntary basis as the Health Commissioner, again, a very nominal pay, but it was really a public service that he did for our community, and as an emergency room physician, he, I guess necessarily could remain calm under any, any situation or circumstance, and fortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of public health issues that we need to wrestle with here in Oakwood, but, you know, you never know, and, and what we really appreciate about Dr. Garrison is his availability, twenty-four-seven, not knowing what might pop up that needs, you know, to be addressed in a, in a professional and in a calm manner, so. Dick, really enjoyed working with you, thank you very much, and I'd like the chief to talk for a few minutes here about the medical director role, because that likewise was very, very critical.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as we spoke at the luncheon, and I know not everybody at home or in the audience, we talked a lot about the additions that Dr. Garrison made, because some of the transitions that the EMS service went through during Dr. Garrison's time as our medical director was pretty significant, including the transition to a twelve-lead, you know, life pack style device. Anybody who's ever experienced or witnessed somebody experience a cardiac-related event, it's the most valuable piece of equipment you can have on the scene. He oversaw that, and, and as, as mentioned, you know, a lot of us may pat ourselves on the back because we volunteer our services for six months, or for a year, or for two years. He volunteered his services to the Oakwood Public Safety Department for over twenty-five years, in an advisory capacity because of, he has a strong desire to help the community in which he lived, you know, at the time. The importance of the medical director's position as it relates to the Safety Department is our EMS program exists because of physicians like Dr. Garrison are willing to step up and oversee it, because we operate under his medical license. That's how we're able to administer drugs, go through protocols, is because of that. So I think it's, it's important to recognize his years of service, you know, at, at the time of his departure, he, he set a foundation for success going forward. He recommended, at that time, Dr. Hyzinga, who succeeded him, who has then, has sent stuff aside, and now we have Dr. Ewing today, but all of this has, has been based on the foundation that Dr. Garrison built over a twenty-five-plus-year career, you know, volunteering his services to us, so for that, forever, thank you.
I'll just say, you know, you have examples of EMS here, you have these highly qualified Chris, and I'm sorry I blanked on the other person's name, but these people are highly qualified, and I, I do direction at other, I'm still doing direction at rural areas and smaller cities, you know, you, you really have a gem here, you know, you're really in an area of safety. These people do, from behind you, all the way around, everybody in this administration is first class, so, thank you for allowing me to serve.
Your Honor, may I introduce our new Health Commissioner?
Yes, you may.
If you'll indulge me for a moment here, I want to read a little excerpt from minutes of our Board of Health meeting dated February 4, 1931. In conformity with communication of December 31, 1930, received from Mr. Chaz A. Neal, Director of Health, Department of Health, Columbus, Ohio, a meeting was held this date of the Department of Health as provided for under ordinance number 992, passed by the Council of the City of Oakwood, January 5, 1931. The said call having been issued to all members of the Board by the Mayor, L. P. Rieger. The said meeting was held in the council room of the city building at 7:30 o'clock PM this date. Those present were the following: Dr. F. D. Crowell, MD, Dr. F. W. Cockrell, DDS, Dr. Harry T. Moss, DVS, Mr. S. H. Graybill, and Mr. C. A. Stringer. Others present were Mayor L. P. Rieger, City Solicitor, W. M. Matthews, and City Clerk, A. C. Bergman. The mayor called the meeting to order, and at some length explained the purpose thereof. He set out that the proclamation, or he set out that by proclamation of the Secretary of State, the village of Oakwood automatically became a city as of January 1, 1931, necessitating a transition in the form of government from that of a village to that of a city. The mayor further set out that heretofore the corporation of Oakwood was part of the General County Health District, but that by reason of its transition to a city is now automatically removed therefrom and becomes a city health district. So if you've ever wondered what the genesis of our Oakwood Health District was, now you know, and so it was the 1930 census where our population exceeded 5,000, and in the state of Ohio, for a municipal corporation, if you have population less than 5,000, you're a village, more than 5,000, you're a city, so. Now, when I became City Manager, way back in nineteen, or 2002, I realized that I was the fifth City Manager since 1931, so we've had long, long tenures of City Managers. What I didn't know until today is that likewise, we've had extremely long tenures of the Health Commissioner position. So if you look back at our minutes, from 1931, January 1, 1931, until 1953, a doctor by the name of H. W. Lotenschlager, I'm thinking he was German-
Good guess.
...served as the Oakwood Health Commissioner. From 1954 until June of 1992, a few months before I started here on city staff, Dr. Kenneth Arnn was our Health Commissioner, and some in the audience or maybe watching this at home remember Dr. Arnn. From June 1, 1992 until June of 2007, Dr. Mary Pryor was our Health Commissioner, and you may also know that Mary was also a member of City Council and for a period of time was our Vice Mayor. Sadly, she died in office in her early eighties, and at the time, Dr. Garrison was the Assistant Health Commissioner, and he served in an acting role for a few months, and then on January 1 of 2008, he was officially appointed as the Health Commissioner. And now, I'm here tonight to introduce Dr. Stephen Enzalite as our fifth Health Commissioner since 1931 for the city of Oakwood.
Wow.
So, I hope you're going to use for a long time.
Can be around for a while.
So, just a few quick words about Dr. Enzalite. As I say, Oakwood operates our own health district, and it's established by our city charter. The Health Commissioner is appointed by the City Manager, and like the City Manager, who acts as the Health Board Administrator, the two of us report to the Board of Health. So Dr. Enzalite's appointment is effective January 1 of 2019. He's an emergency physician for emergency medicine specialists, serving both in patient care throughout the Kettering Health Network, as well as a leadership role within the Emergency Medical Department at Kettering Medical Center. He has a BS degree in chemical engineering, and we kind of joked about that with my civil engineering background, that he did that for two or three years, and that degree was from Case Western Reserve, and then he went to medical school at UC Medical School of Medicine, and graduated in 2003. He's licensed by the American Board of Emergency Medicine, and is, carries a title of Assistant Medical Director within the Kettering Medical Center, is on the Stroke Steering Committee for the Kettering Medical Center, and serves as the Assistant Medical Director for the West Carrollton EMS Department, amongst, I'm sure, some other things, so I'm very happy to introduce Dr. Enzalite, and very pleased to have him be our fifth Health Commissioner for the city of Oakwood.
Very good, congratulations.
Welcome. I'll just say that I have three kids, my youngest is, is in third grade at Harmon, so I'll be here for many years.
Okay.
Hope to keep that list.
So in 2050, we'll be looking for your replacement, correct?
Replacement.
Again, welcome, sir, and we appreciate, and Dr. Garrison, thank you for your service, we, we clearly appreciate that. I know that there are several PSOs in the back of the room here, that we hear the stories where they have, they have literally saved lives by being able to use that equipment in their EMS training to get, to get a citizen, and when you've got a, you know, a minute and a half response time, or two-minute response time at best, you know, those seconds, those seconds and minutes, you definitely can save lives, and, and we've seen it as members of council here, so we appreciate all your efforts on behalf of the citizens of Oakwood.
That's definitely.
And we then have, under council committee assignments, this is something we do each year when the council convenes for the first meeting of the year, council has certain subcommittees and committees that they serve, where, you know, generally two, two people on council will meet with the City Manager or whatever the issue is, and then they would give recommendations to the remaining council members. We have no changes to the council committee assignments that previously existed in 2018, so I'll make a motion that we accept our council committee assignments, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then under citizen committees, we have a lot of volunteer committees for the city, where in the, we have several vacancies on our Budget Review Committee, on our, here we go, Personnel Appeals Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Tax Water Assessment Appeals Board, and our Property Maintenance Committee, so we'll be in the process of identifying citizen volunteers, and hopefully can report back at our next meeting in February and fill out some of those, some of those vacancies. And so that ends our Status Report section, we have yet another special guest here, we have Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keith, who wants to present a very special award to one of our Oakwood employees. Welcome, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, and the opportunity to recognize one of your outstanding employees. I'm here to recognize Assistant Finance Director Alice Young, and I guess we, I'll keep this theme going here about the tenured-
Come on up here, Alice, we want to see you on TV.
Alice is, Alice, of course, as you know, is a, what more, has served the city of Oakwood more than forty years, and we, back in December at my annual update, we recognized Alice with what we call the Jesse Haynes Award, and again, to keep the theme going, Jesse Haynes was the longest-serving county auditor. He served for twenty-eight years as county auditor, which is no easy feat, and, but prior to that, Jesse had a distinguished career as a Major League Baseball player. He's from Phillipsburg, grew up here in Montgomery County, and played Major League Baseball for the St. Louis Cardinals, pitched a no-hitter, played in three, played on three World Series championship teams, so he is an All-Star, he's a member of the Major League Baseball All-Star-
Hall of Fame.
...Hall of Fame, and, and we think Alice is a Hall of Fame employee, she, again, she's a forty-year employee with the, with the city of Oakwood, my understanding she's led you through, what, paper ledgers, through computer systems, and, and you know, you can imagine what she, the changes that she has seen in the finance area over a forty-year period, but I, but I, but what I've been told is she's often the first one here and the last one to leave, and so the real backbone of the finance department here for the city of Oakwood, and so we want to recognize her with our Jesse Haynes Award for her outstanding service to the city and to this community. Again, this award is given to, to a local finance official in recognition of, of the work that they do and the contributions they make to, to our community, and certainly Alice is well-deserving of that, and so we wanted to come tonight to formally present that to you in front of the council tonight, so.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Cindy Stafford, our Finance Director, wants to say a few kind words about Alice.
I do, actually, what I want to do is I want to read what I wrote in the, in the nomination for Alice. Alice began her career with the city of Oakwood on January 9, 1978, and after forty-plus years will retire on September 30, 2019. Alice has worked with three City Managers and four Finance Directors over her career. She has worked tirelessly for the residents and businesses of Oakwood and for her fellow employees. She is the backbone of the finance department, and filling her shoes will be a monumental task. Alice's knowledge of municipal finance allowed her to serve as Acting Finance Director on many occasions throughout her career. When asked why she never wanted to be the Finance Director, her response was always the same, "I am a worker bee, and I like to be behind the scenes." She made sure that the finance department continued to provide the residents of Oakwood the same level of service despite being shorthanded by putting in many long hours during the weekend on weekends. Her efforts made sure that as each new Finance Director joined the finance team, the transition was seamless. She has seen the finance department evolve from reams of old paper ledgers and an old NCR cash register to sophisticated computers and computer programs, a bring-it-on attitude for whatever the latest technology so the department could work more efficiently. She has processed and trained employees in payroll, accounts payable, utility billing, and all the debits and credits in between. Her favorite quote, "Watch the pennies and the dollars will follow," has proven invaluable as she carefully oversees the expenses of the city. One of Alice's greatest assets to me is her problem-solving skills. I volunteered our finance team to assist our accounting software vendor in both alpha and beta testing the development of their new accounting package. Without hesitation, Alice herself or with another finance team member mapped out the process after process from beginning to end to ensure the integrity of the new accounting system. The following is a comment received from our vendor. Alice has been an alpha and beta tester for software solutions for years. Early on, she realized the importance of improving technology to better serve citizens. She has been instrumental in guiding and facilitating improvements in our software product for local governments. Her willingness to go above and beyond her normal duties is inspiring. She is the ideal public servant who puts community first. We are so very proud of Alice and are grateful to have her as part of our extended team. Thank you, Alice. Alice is the first one in the office and oft, often the last one to leave, and selflessly spends many weekend hours at work. She is a perfectionist in every sense of the word, attentive to every detail. Alice even serves as the final proofreader for important written work, most often directed for the City Manager. Additionally, Alice willingly accepts any new challenge or work ass- Additionally, Alice willingly accepts any new challenge or work assignment thrown her way. When former Mayor Judy Cook wanted to start an Oakwood-Kettering annual Martin Luther King breakfast celebration event, and finance expertise was needed to account for dollars coming in and going out, Alice happily accepted the additional assignment. She worked side-by-side with Mayor Cook to create a wonderful event and saw to it that all financial matters were handled expertly. Alice believes no additional task is beyond her normal job description, from the city shredded events to gathering the towels, from the safety department workout room to maintaining the employee kitchen and lunchroom refrigerator. For Alice is, for the residents and the businesses of Oakwood or for her fellow employees, she is always there to help. Alice does not like being in the spotlight, but careers like hers are few and far between. Alice's retirement letter stated, "I was greeted with smiles and best wishes for my success when I arrived on January ninth, nineteen seventy-eight, my first day of employment, and would like to depart in the same manner. I beg to disagree." Alice's loyalty to the city of Oakwood and work ethic should be recognized and held as an example of what service in the public sector means.
If we're not putting her in the spotlight, I think you did a pretty good job.
Yes, I think.
And I don't know what you're gonna do when she retires. I really don't.
You know what? I've worked here long enough, and Carol, you can work with me, so we have more longevity. We have worked here long enough to know that every time a person leaves, they do take something with them. But every time a new person comes, they bring something with them. So I have, I have no fears, doubts, or concerns that the finance department is gonna go right on. The people I work with are the best. Cindy will tell you that I know next to nothing about sports, but after listening to Mr. Haynes and the fact that he was part of winning teams, I can say, this is very appropriate, because I have always been a part of winning teams here at the city of Oakwood, not just finance, but the entire organization. So I thank you so much for your faith in me, and thank you for everything. I am very grateful.
Thank you, Alice.
Thanks.
Get a picture.
Do we want a picture? Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure. You want to make it down?
Yeah.
Photoshop.
Yeah, he made me look good, so.
What do you want? This is good, or?
I'm sure why the.
Gotta be good. One of them is good.
People are boing.
Yes. And we have yet more winners here tonight. We have our holiday decorating awards, and Jane Lieber's going to help me in handing out those awards. We'll come down and call your names, and then you can come up and we'll present your awards.
Getting your workout today.
I know if you've been driving around our city, it's just absolutely beautiful this time of year. And we, we, there's several, I don't know how you even chose on some of these. You had a lot of nominees. But the first one is Marilyn and John Reed, five-twenty-five Ridgewood Avenue. Are the Reeds here? Come on up. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. And we have a nice, it's a nice picture of your home decorated. We had both awards for daytime and nighttime awards. So this was a daytime award. Thank you very much. Congratulations. This is a nighttime award. Julia and Jonathan Lamb, four-thirty-seven Volusia. There are the Lambs here. Here you go. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right.
And we have a daytime award. This is Linda and Bart Weprin, six-hundred Garden Road. And they are not here, but we'll make sure that this award gets to them. And we have a nighttime award. Carly and Ian Ferrier, twenty-nine Wisteria Drive. Are they here? All right. Yeah. And we have Elizabeth and Matt Cusman, Cusman, two-twenty-six Telford. Are the Cusmans here? All right. Say another nighttime award. Nancy and Lawrence Welsh, four-twenty-three Wiltshire Boulevard. Congratulations. Congratulations. And here is a daytime award. Vale and John McGuire, three-sixty East Drive. McGuire is not here. And a nighttime award. I'm gonna have trouble with this one. Sarah and Jacob Choculus, four-sixteen East Drive. We will make sure we get that to them. And here is another daytime award. Nancy Cusman, twenty-four-oh-eight Hillview Avenue. I believe there's some relations there. Is that a mother-daughter? Yeah. No, it's not? It is. Mom and, okay. Yes. And then the nighttime award, the Beechers, twenty-five Grandin Road. And they are here. Congratulations. Congratulations. And here is a daytime award. Vale and John McGuire, three-sixty East Drive. McGuire is not here. And a nighttime award. I'm gonna have trouble with this one. Sarah and Jacob Choculus, four-sixteen East Drive. We will make sure we get that to them. And here is another daytime award. Nancy Cusman, twenty-four-oh-eight Hillview Avenue. I believe there's some relations there. Is that a mother-daughter? Yeah. No, it's not? It is. Mom and, okay. Yes. And then the nighttime award, the Beechers, twenty-five Grandin Road. And they are here. Congratulations. Congratulations. You wanna hold it? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. And we have a daytime award. Jennifer and Patrick Prickle, nine-three-oh Harmon Avenue. And they are here. Welcome. Congratulations. And we have a nighttime award. Jennifer and Patrick Prickle, nine-three-oh Harmon Avenue. And they are here. Welcome. Congratulations. And we have a nighttime award. The Duhell Family, fourteen-ninety-two Ridgeway Road. Congratulations. And we also had two awards for Oakwood businesses. The daytime award for an Oakwood business is the Blue Turtle Toys, twenty-three-fourteen Far Hills Avenue. Are they here? Here she comes. Congratulations. And then our nighttime award is Lulabelle Whimsical Art and Stationery, right across the street at twenty-three Park Avenue. Congratulations. And, and thank you for your assistance in this. You know, okay, we really appreciate your volunteer efforts. So we're now to, can you hear us? That other mic seems louder. Okay. The, we're now to the visitor's section of our meeting. If anyone has, wishes to address council on any matters, this would be the time to come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Who would wish to address council at this time? All right. Oh, yeah, this is the time. If you, yes, I'm sorry. Welcome. If you could, again, your name and address for the record.
John Clark at one-twelve Beverly Place, Oakwood residence for twenty-eight years. Eight, eight and then twenty. And I'm, I'm just wanting to, to talk a little bit about the leash law.
Okay.
If possible.
Yep.
I guess it probably would be no secret that, that I would be here opposing it to a certain degree. I do believe in keeping my, my dog, and all dogs, under control. I've got a, for the last twenty years in Oakwood, we've had two dogs, and I've trained them very well, and they walk with me on the sidewalk with the current one with an electronic collar and a, and a handheld unit, just in case there's a need to call her back. But, but she listens to my commands. She, she holds, she sits, she lays. And, and so I guess I'm just really maybe curious what the history of this, the change in law is. What, what problem are we trying to solve? I think that's maybe because I, if it's, if, I, I, again, being an Oakwood resident for twenty-eight years and, and walking with people who have dogs and, and, and meeting people who have dogs, it seems that, that, that those even who I've met who walk with their dog off the leash probably are, have a very close control on their dog. And I have not necessarily encountered any problems with, with this in my time in Oakwood. So, so my question, I guess, is what, what is the motivation here? What, what is the problem we're trying to solve with this?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We are gonna have Chief Hill give a presentation regarding this ordinance that we have here tonight. And I think, hopefully that will address some, if, if not all, of your concerns. But I thank you for your comments.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wish to address council on this matter or other matters? In the back, if you'd like to come up to the front, and again, if you could state your name and address for the record, too, we would welcome you.
My name is Don Eiler, and I live on Oakwood Avenue. I have some written comments, if you'll bear with me. I feel unfortunately that perhaps tonight you're gonna pass this ordinance, and I considered skipping this meeting, but that wouldn't be fair to my dog. I walk my dog with a leash. He walks under control, conforming to the present ordinance. And now, as I stand here, you're telling me that's not enough. We want you tomorrow to walk your dog on a leash. I've never had a problem with my dog. He hasn't bit anybody, hasn't harassed anybody. As a matter of fact, we have both made new friends while walking. I walk my dog probably six times a day. It's good exercise for me and my dog. My doctor tells me to keep walking. Do any of you have a dog? Do you walk your dog? Do you walk your dog with a lead or no lead? If you walk with a lead, wouldn't you really like to ask your dog if he wants to go for a walk? Walk out the door without a lead, wander up the street, knowing your dog is happy and under control? Walking with a lead is not the same as walking without one. I personally don't need a lead to walk my dog, and I'm offended by the nature of this new ordinance, that I'm not doing my part by training and having my dog under control. By the way, I wouldn't dare walk my dog if he wasn't under complete control, considering the way people race up and down city streets and don't stop at stop signs. If my dog was not under control, he probably would not be with me today. And I'm quite serious about that. I've had trouble, probably a lot, on Oakwood Avenue, which is very narrow and a brick road, day and night. I walk my dog because we both enjoy it. I would like to continue to do so. Yet I'm personally beginning to feel the community is not as enjoyable place to live as it once was. Now, as a follow-up, I want to address the case of the electric collar, also called the shock collar, which some people now use to walk their dogs, as a device, as a carryover from the invisible fence, which is used widely to keep control of their dogs in their yard. When adopted for walking, it consists of the collar plus a handheld transmitter. It becomes an invisible leash. It's an extremely effective tool. So why not let people continue to use the shock collar to control their dogs instead of the proposed leash? And to have a more enjoyable walk with their dog? It might be a good time now to give that, put that shock collar on a trial period. And you will be, you might be surprised how well they work, and you might want to experience and enjoy this technology. Obviously, there are dogs, and there will always be some dogs, handled by unresponsible people, resulting in dogs not under control. Why not just deal with them? The existing ordinance is obvious, so written to control this problem. People who walk their dogs under control without a leash should be able to do so. Maybe this issue should be revisited with options to accommodate responsible dog walkers. Why not try to find a way? I prepared these comments this afternoon, and just before coming up here, I thought, well, let's make it a little simpler. This, the issue here is control. The existing ordinance and the new ordinance are all about control. To me, there are three methods to attain this. The leash, the shock collar, and good old-fashioned dog training. If you have trouble accepting any of these, then the discussion is over. If not, why not include them in our workable ordinance? Thank you for your time. I just would leave you with this parting question. If this ordinance is passed, and if all the people who have not used the leash in the past all show up tomorrow, walking their dogs with a leash, do I still have to use a leash? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address council on this matter or any other matter? This would be your time to do it before we go into legislation. You, okay, welcome. You could state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, Ryan Stitzinger, ten-twenty Running Meet. Spoke with Mr. Jacks multiple times this week. Just wanna make sure we'd be able to see the list of required equipment for the low-speed vehicles that we discussed the other night. Is that something?
We, we have a draft inspection form, is it, which I think you've seen a draft of. Those, the two items that you and I talked about earlier today have been moved down to the bottom at this point. I can email you a copy of that if you like.
Okay. All right. Just double-check on.
Thank you. Who else would like to address council at this, at this time? All right. That will then conclude the visitors' portion of our meeting. We will now go to the legislation section, and we have an ordinance regarding our refuse rates by Councilmember Epley.
Thank you, Your Honor. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Oakwood, Ohio. This is the second reading of an ordinance to update Appendix A, which is the public services rate sheet. The ordinance will increase city refuse collection rates by three dollars per month per residential unit. When the Ohio estate tax was eliminated in two thousand and thirteen, the city of Oakwood lost about twenty percent of its average annual revenue. This forced several changes in Oakwood, including the decision to end our practice of subsidizing the refuse collection program with general fund tax dollars. We restructured the program so that a hundred percent of the cost is paid by user fees. In addition to our weekly backdoor household trash and recyclables collection and disposal for about thirty-two hundred residential properties, the refuse fees pay for the other services provided through our comprehensive refuse program, including special pickups for disposal of large household items, fall leaf pickup, and conversion of leaves to yard mulch and made available to our Oakwood citizens. The refuse dumpster program for efficient disposal. made available to our Oakwood citizens, the refuse dumpster program for efficient disposal of remodeling debris from do-it-yourself projects and other household and yard items, containers to self-dump yard debris and recyclables at a 24/7 drop-off location in the Krieger Field parking lot, monthly self-dumping options at the Public Works Yard for residents to dispose of large household items and other debris. The refuse fees also pay for the year-round collection and disposal of yard debris throughout Oakwood. Given the enormous number of trees and other plant material in Oakwood, this is a very large task with significant labor and capital equipment costs. We last raised refuse rates three years ago. This $3 per month rate increase is necessary to address capital equipment needs over the next few years. Our citizen budget review committee supports this rate increase. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that counsel adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions for Councilmember Epley? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then, next on our agenda, Councilmember Stevens has an ordinance regarding pets at large.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance to amend existing Section 505.01 Pets at Large of the Oakwood General offenses Code to require dogs to be leashed when off the owner's premises, to clarify the exception for service animals, to exempt the dog park at Krieger Field, and to amend the penalties for violations. This is the second reading of an ordinance to require dogs to be kept on leashes when off the owner's property. It was introduced with a first reading at our December meeting, and Public Safety Director Alan Hill is here tonight to make a short presentation as to the need for these changes. Chief Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Klopch. I'm going to try to not read this verbatim, but I will, I think it's important to read some of the specificity within the proposed changes, so everybody knows exactly what is being proposed for the change, or being proposed change out in the audience. Currently, 505.01 is written as pets at large. The owner or keeper of every pet shall at all times keep that pet confined upon the premises of such owner or keeper except set forth below. Pets are permitted to be upon the sidewalk and streets and rights-of-way areas, but only to the extent they're under reasonable control. That is the way the ordinance is currently written. The proposed changes, or the proposed change in this section redefines pets as dogs, because as, as we discussed, this ordinance in its totality, really, dogs and dogs at large is, is what this ordinance is designed to cover. The owner or animal of every dog shall at all times keep such dog confined upon the premises of owner, or of the owner, except as set forth below. And this is the modification to the two, Section Two. Dogs shall be permitted to be upon the sidewalk and, and street rights-of-way areas, but only to the extent they are securely leashed and under the reasonable control of the dog. There's an "and" component to it, and I guess about the big, the biggest extreme analogy I could give you is if you have a five-year-old walking a Great Dane, you could say, okay, the dog is placed on a leash, but is it really under the reasonable control of the person walking that? So there, it's a two-part component. Now, if, if it is, if this ordinance is adopted tonight, it'll require a secured-leash dog, plus it needs to be under the reasonable control of the person. Dogs shall also be, also be permitted to be within the fenced areas of the dog park at Krieger Field with or without a leash, so as long as the owner, keeper, or agent thereof is also present. So somebody can't just walk up, let their dog go loose, and then continue their walk or whatever, and then come back in a period of time. You need to stay with your dog while they're at the facility. Why the change, and I know that's the big question for this, the recommended changes to this ordinance are being made solely with public safety concerns in mind. The goal is to reduce the number of dog calls and dog bites that occur within our community. The leash law is designed to mitigate the unpredictability of dogs and to protect both citizens and animals from unexpected and unwanted encounters with dogs. You know, a little bit of, we talk about this within our community. We're a population density of 9,200 within 2.2 square miles. You know, one could argue that the east side of our city is some of the most densely populated areas within Montgomery County. And within our confined area of 2.2 square miles, we have around 1,000 dogs registered in Oakwood with around 38 total housing units. So it's a pretty significant number of dogs that we have within our community, and even the most well-trained dogs can be unpredictable. Citizens should be able to move about the public sidewalks and rights-of-way freely without concern or fear of unleashed dogs. When we talk about the frequency, the volume of incidents, do we see this often? Do we come across this? How often have we responded? We went back since January 1, 2014, for the last five years. The safety department has responded to 20, 127 dog-related incidents, calls for service, of which 39 of these incidents have been reported dog bites. I, I look at that number, and from a public safety concern, 39 dog bites is a significant number. The most common types of calls for service and situations we see involving dogs around the city are dogs at large, they're just running totally loose, they get out of an owner's backyard, fenced-in yard, property, help themselves out the door, whatever it may be, and they're just running totally loose. Dogs are running along the side of the owner, and they're off-leash. We, from time to time, respond to calls for service where somebody's out jogging with their dog, and they're running through an intersection of a street, maybe the dog goes astray a little bit, somebody coming from across the street, almost collides, hits the runner or the dog, and now will respond to a call for service. Walking with, the dog is walking with the owner and temporarily released off the leash is another frequent type of call. Somebody is out enjoying a, a walk, they're walking down a sidewalk, public right-of-way, and a dog is being walked off-leash that makes them feel uncomfortable, they contact us. And then the last one is just the unsecured and unattended dog. Those are the four most common type of dog-related incidents that we respond to. Mr. Stevens did mention the service dog exception. The proposed legislation does include a service dog exception, which states, service animals may be off the premises of such owner while engaged in the performance of their duties. That's the caveat. They have to be in perform, they have to be in the performance of their official duties so long as the service animal is kept under the direct control of the owner, keeper, or agent thereof. In the performance of their official duties and kept under the direct control of the owner or the keeper. The purpose of this section, an animal is a service animal if it is classified as a certain service animal under any provision of federal law, or as an assistance dog or animal assistant under the Ohio Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code. So there's three different classifications there. If the service dog meets one of those three, it would fall under the service dog exception. The, the way the ordinance is written, for, there is current penalties in place for the current pets-at-large ordinance, ordinance, the dog-at-large ordinance would retain a penalty component. Whoever violates this section shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor. Minimum fines plus court costs have been established and shall be imposed for anyone found in violation of this ordinance. And from an enforcement standpoint, which I know for those probably in the audience and, and watching at home, is probably a, a question of theirs. And from a safety department standpoint, this ordinance is designed with public safety as our primary concern, and the issuance of a verbal warning along with educating the citizen is the preferred course of action for anyone who's found to be in violation the first time. Repeat violations and offenders will have to be addressed accordingly. So again, just to close, the ordinance is being, the changes in the ordinance is being proposed from a public safety standpoint.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Hill?
Um, I do, Chief. So we, we changed the title from pets to dogs. Did we have problems? I don't know what else a pet would be, like a cat or something. It's...
Every now and again, we get a stray cat.
Yeah, but they don't...
But it's very few and far between. We just discussed this through some changes at the Montgomery County Animal Resource Center, and there's communities around us that have significant feral cat problems. We fortunately do not experience that here within the city of Oakwood. Our, our cat calls are few and far between.
Yeah.
Predominantly, as we talk about the 505.01 section, 99% of the time...
Got it.
...we're talking specifically about dogs.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, so our officers will be aware that if they come across a dog that is out, and it was, you know, it's a house dog slash in the backyard where there's a fence, but they do get out the front door, the side door, because that does happen. It's happened to many dog owners, and they run, especially when they're puppies. The, the officers are aware to make sure they know it's a, oops, left, the kid left the door unlocked, something like that, and the dog pushed its way out. And we're not gonna...
Sure, Mr. Stevens, I think as we go forward, the enforcement action on that going forward would be very similar to what we experience now. We commonly respond to those calls where the dogs get out.
Right.
And, you know, at that time, it's locating the dog, whether we can return it immediately to the owner, we bring it back to the kennel here at the building, and shortly, typically within a couple hours, we're able to reunite the dog with the owner. But I, it's a very soft enforcement on something like that.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. A question about the definition of the leash. I know there are some of these leashes that are just, you know, so many, so many feet long, others have these retractable leashes. Is there any definition in the ordinance that...
No, the caveat is, we define the, a leashed dog within the ordinance is a physical leash. We've heard a couple of comments about the electronic leashes. That is not covered within the ordinance. They can have a retractable leash, whether that is a leash that goes out to six feet, eight feet, but remember the second component. It's a retractable, they can have a retractable leash as long as they're able to maintain reasonable control of their dog. If the dog is spooked, sees something, is startled, and goes after something, and now you have a dog on a six-foot leash that has the capability to extend it 20 feet, does the owner or agent or keeper of that dog have the ability to stop that device to keep that from extracting out to 20 feet? So that's the second part of the component, is, it's, a physical leash is required, and even though it's on a leash, you have the ability to keep it under your control.
Okay, and my final question is, is, are, are dogs on, are leash laws for dogs, is that common in this area or, or not?
Yeah, when you look at the two jurisdictions that join ours, Dayton and Kettering, and they're very different cities, population size-wise and all that, but they both have leash law requirements. Kettering has one, and Dayton's is a little bit more restrictive because it mandates a leash with a maximum length of six feet. So when, when we talk about the retractable-type leashes, those are prohibited, anything more than six feet within the city of Dayton. So, so yeah, when you look at our two neighboring communities. But when we evaluated this here within our community, we just, we looked at the ordinance, we looked at the calls for services, we've looked at some of the things we've experienced with the calls for services and the dog bites that we've had, and the goal is to reduce the number of dog-related incidents in, in dog bites. And, you know, even if that number's 10%, in my mind, that's a big number, because of, it only takes one. We read about them in the newspaper, we see them on TV, we read about them through internet news. It only takes one significant incident involving a dog to traumatize somebody's life, and in some cases, worse.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
I have nothing else to be, continue on.
Okay, if you, you wish to continue, does anyone else have questions for, for Chief? All right.
Okay. Again, the ordinance in front of us tonight will require dogs to be securely leashed and under reasonable control, and also makes changes to clarify the service animal exception and to create an exemption for the dog park at Krieger Field. This is the second reading of this ordinance, therefore I move that counsel adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion before we vote?
Just a quick question. How many people on council have dogs?
How many have been bitten by dogs?
Okay.
How many have been to the emergency room?
I have, I have not been to the emergency room. Okay. Um, I won't walk my dog because he wants to poop on every neighbor's yard, so, but...
You can't afford the bags?
I cannot. Okay. Well, I still, that's why I used to get the Dayton Daily News for the bag. Okay. Uh, any other comments? All right, hearing none, then Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, you also have a, an ordinance regarding the low-speed vehicles that was previously talked about in the visitor's section.
Yes, an ordinance to adopt new Section 375.09, low-speed vehicles, underspeed vehicles, utility vehicles, and mini trucks of the Oakwood Traffic Code. This is the second reading of an ordinance to allow golf carts and similar unconventional vehicles to be operated on Oakwood streets. It was introduced with a first reading at council's December meeting. Council is aware that some Oakwood residents have golf carts and similar unconventional vehicles that they would like to use on our public streets, and the purpose of this ordinance is to authorize that use. Before we proceed to motion and vote, Law Director Rob Jacks is here to make a short presentation as to the state of the law concerning these vehicles. Mr. Jacks?
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Can I grab my water? I apologize, I'm getting over a pretty bad head cold, and my voice is not always cooperating. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Klopch, thank you for having to come down to talk about this tonight. This is a, an interesting topic. You wouldn't know it from the boring heading of miscellaneous vehicles, but I find it interesting. What I want to talk about tonight are some particular vehicles. We call them low-speed vehicles, underspeed vehicles, utility vehicles, and mini trucks. But sort of add it into the presentation, when we've, when we started working on this ordinance, we also wanted to take sort of a broader look at other kinds of vehicles that we commonly encounter here in Oakwood. So you'll hear me talk about things like mopeds and, and toy vehicles and all kinds of things that you might see around town. I tried to include that in here. What constitutes a motor vehicle is defined by state law in Ohio. It's set forth in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 4501.01, and you'll see on my slide here, I've got a notation, pre SB 114. That means before Senate Bill 114, law that was passed at the state level way back in 2012 or 2013, but it had provisions that didn't take effect until January 1st of 2017. Prior to that effective date, a motor vehicle was any vehicle that's propelled or drawn by power other than muscular power or overhead electric, electric trolley wires. There were a couple of exceptions in there. There was a carve-out for utility vehicles, motorized bicycles, which is what we think of as mopeds, and certain construction and farm equipment. But generally speaking, if, if something was, was not powered by human power or by overhead trolley wires, it was considered a motor vehicle, and all of the state motor vehicle laws would apply to that. Now that Senate Bill 114 is effective, the definition's expanded. It's still defined as propelled or drawn by, other than human power and overhead trolley wires, but they've added two more exemptions down at the bottom. It still includes utility vehicles, mopeds, and certain construction and farm equipment, but they also carved out what are now called underspeed vehicles and mini trucks, and I'll get into those definitions here tonight. But that was a new exemption, which means that those vehicles are not defined as motor vehicles in Ohio, so there are some different rules that apply. So I tried to include some pictures here to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. A utility vehicle is the John Deere Gators, the things like that that we see commonly. They're self-propelled, they usually have a bed, principal purpose is to transport material or cargo, connection with construction or agriculture, landscaping, that sort of thing. That's a utility vehicle. An underspeed vehicle is a vehicle that has either three or four wheels and a top speed of 20 miles per hour or less. Golf carts fall into this category, particularly the ones that you see, you know, the, the golf course-type golf carts. There's some souped-up ones now that are called LSVs, I'll get to that in a minute. But most golf carts fall into this underspeed vehicle definition. This is the souped-up one, the low-speed vehicle. Federal law has kind of tackled these, and they've, they've specifically defined it as a motor vehicle, so states have to recognize that as well. They go a little bit faster than your golf course, golf carts. They go over 20 but less than 25 miles per hour. They still have the three or four wheels, but they also have a couple of additional equipment requirements that go along with them. Mini trucks, the, the one that springs to mind is we've seen the Say Two grilled cheese lady that drives around town. She has one of these types of vehicles that is probably a mini truck. It's a motor vehicle with four wheels, it can be either electric or gas-powered, an enclosed cabin and seat, a cargo area and a bed to the rear, and these are vehicles that were not originally manufactured to meet federal safety standards that would apply to cars, vans, trucks, things like that, but the federal government has decided that they are nonetheless safe to operate as a motor vehicle now. safe to operate as a motor vehicle now. Then we get to some of these other ones that we see around town, motorcycles, I think we all have a pretty good idea of what that is, but there's a specific definition in state law. It has motive power, meaning non-human power, it includes a seat or a saddle, three or fewer wheels, and has no top on the occupant compartment. A bicycle is defined in state law as any device other than a device designed solely for use as a play vehicle by a child that is propelled solely by human power and a person may ride it. Can have two or more wheels, but at least one wheel has to be more than fourteen inches in diameter. When you meet all the, all the prongs of that, you have a bicycle. A motorized bicycle, what I grew up calling a moped, that's what you see in the picture there, it's any vehicle that has either two tandem wheels or one in front and two in the rear. Tandem means one in front of the other, not side by side. And it has to be capable of being pedaled. I don't know that people really pedal these much, but they can be pedaled. They have a helper motor on there, a pretty small power, small displacement kind of helper motor, and they have relatively low brake horsepower, and again, maximum speed is twenty or less on those. Picture's a little hard to see here because of the black background on that, but we have a category of electric personal assistive mobility devices, these are the segue-type vehicles, they're self-balancing, two non-tandem wheels, designed to transport one person, and they have an operating speed of less than twenty miles per hour for a person of a hundred and seventy pounds. I think if you're much lighter, you can go a whole lot faster on them. And then we get to the category of toy vehicles, which we see around town here quite a bit, we have a lot of children in town. There's no real statutory definition for play vehicles, except that a bicycle is anything not designed solely for play as a child. These are the devices that are, that are designed for play by a child, and you see a variety of types there, the razor scooters, the tricycles, the hoverboards and all that sort of thing, Barbie Dream Jeep maybe, those, these are all toy vehicles that we see out about here in town. So I'll talk about how the laws relate to all these different types of vehicles. Motorcycles are to be used on the street only, you can't operate them on sidewalks. All of the standard motor vehicle laws are applicable to them, and you have to have a special endorsement on your driver's license to be able to operate one. Bicycles can be used on the street or on the sidewalk. If you use it on the street, you have to follow motor vehicle laws, which means stopping for stop signs, all that sort of thing, observing the speed limits. There also, there's some equipment that's required if you're operating on the street, you know, the bell, lights at night, that sort of thing. Bicycles may not be operated recklessly, which generally means that you need to yield the right of way to pedestrians and not drive in a way to endanger pedestrians when you're on the sidewalk. Mopeds can be used on the street only. They're, they have to follow all of the normal motor vehicle laws. You can operate them at age fourteen and above with a moped license, or sixteen and above with a regular driver's license, and if you're under eighteen, you're required to wear a helmet. The electric personal assistive mobility devices are permitted under state law unless they are prohibited by the local authority. Here in Oakwood, council has not adopted an anti-segway ordinance, which means you're allowed to operate a segway here in Oakwood, state law says you can. You can use them on the street or on the sidewalk, you just can't operate them on a street that has a speed limit of fifty or greater. Generally, motor vehicle laws do not apply to these, which is a little frightening to me. You can operate them at age fourteen to fifteen as long as you have a companion of eighteen years or older with you, and if you're under eighteen, you have to wear a helmet. And then the toy or play vehicles, these are prohibited on streets at all times unless you're crossing the street and then only in a crosswalk, and they are treated no differently as a pedestrian under the law. You cannot attach them to any vehicle, so you can't pull your, your son on a hoverboard or, or your daughter in an electric Jeep of some sort. Then we get to the law, the new provisions that came in under Senate Bill one fourteen and how that relates to underspeed utility, mini trucks, and low-speed vehicles. I'm going to talk about them in two separate categories because the, the low-speed vehicles, these LSVs are kind of treated a little bit differently because of the federal provisions that I mentioned before. Underspeed, utility, and mini trucks are prohibited under state law unless they're permitted by the local authority. This is the opposite of the segway. Segways are allowed unless council says no. Underspeed, utility, and mini trucks are prohibited unless council says yes. So, current status is that those vehicles are, are not legal to operate on the streets in the city of Oakwood because council has not adopted an ordinance to permit them. What the Ohio Revised Code says is that if, if you do permit them, they're allowed on streets up to a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit, which would be, that would cover all the streets here in Oakwood. But council is allowed to adopt a more restrictive speed cap for those vehicles, which we'll talk about in the ordinance tonight. We've got that capped at twenty-five so that they would not be operated on far hills or on Schroyer, parts of West Shance that are thirty-five miles per hour. Low-speed vehicles are, are permitted under state law regardless of whether council has adopted an ordinance pro or con. They're allowed because the federal government says they're allowed. State law will allow them to be used on streets up to thirty-five, just like the other underspeed utility and mini trucks, but the local authority, which is city council, can regulate that. In the, in this ordinance, we've proposed to cap that at twenty-five as well for the same reasons. New section three seventy-five point oh nine, that's what the, the ordinance in front of you tonight is proposing to add to our code. It's a, it's a whole section there on these, these miscellaneous vehicles, and this is just kind of a, a bulleted list of what the ordinance requires. If you have one of these utility vehicles, underspeed, low-speed, or, there's one I'm missing, the, the four that we're talking about here, if you have one of those, you have to have it inspected by the safety department. That's already been the law for a number of these vehicles, if you wanted to operate them on the streets. We didn't do those inspections here through our safety department, but, but there are some residents who have golf carts who've had them inspected by the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, for example, they do these inspections. You have to have that inspection in order to get the vehicle titled and registered with the state. Our ordinance would require that the vehicle be properly titled and registered. You'd have to have a driver's license, and you'd have to have insurance to operate them on city streets. Those two items right there, the license and the insurance, are the only two things that this ordinance will require here in Oakwood that's not also spelled out in state law. We, these are local requirements that we would require you to have a driver's license and insurance. The thought is that that's just, that's a prudent thing to do. The driver's license ensures that you don't have ten-year-olds, six-year-olds driving a golf cart down the street, and the insurance ensures that if damage is caused, and whether someone strikes a pedestrian or causes property damage of some sort, or you just tip over and, and, and damage your vehicle or yourself, that you at least have state minimum liability insurance coverage for that. The vehicle will have to be equipped as required by state law, and again, we're not adding any requirements at the local level that aren't already spelled out in state law. There are additional federal equipment requirements for the low-speed vehicles only, so if you have one of the golf carts that can, that goes faster than twenty but less than twenty-five, you would have to meet those federal equipment requirements as well. Again, I mentioned before, operation would be limited to streets having a speed limit of twenty-five or less. All traffic and parking laws would still apply to these vehicles, just like they do to cars or motorcycles or anything else. And there is an exception built in for city refuse scooters, and that's important because our, our refuse scooters have to be able to collect trash at the homes along far hills, at the homes along Schroyer. They're operated in a, in a different manner than some of these others, they may occasionally have to drive on a sidewalk to, to do the kind of work that they do, and they're operated by trained licensed professionals and insured through the city. I want to close by talking about the equipment requirements, and these are the things that apply to, to low-speed and underspeed vehicles in particular. These are the ones that I think most of our residents are primarily concerned with because we do have a handful of people who own golf carts and want to be able to operate them on our streets. The low-speed vehicles have to meet these federal LSV standards, which require headlights, brake lights, turn signals, taillights, reflectors, parking brakes, rearview mirrors, windshield, seat belts, a license plate light, and a vehicle identification number. The ones on the slide there that you see that are underlined, the seat belts, the license plate light, and the VIN or vehicle identification number, those are not required for the underspeed vehicles, those are unique to the federal requirements. The underspeed vehicles, if they're permitted by the local authority, have to have, and these, this wording comes out of the Ohio Administrative Code, they have to have adequate brakes and braking system, properly working brake lights, headlights, taillights, and turn signals, a properly working steering mechanism, and steering is underlined because the feds don't require that for LSVs, I'm not sure how you drive it if it didn't have a functional steering mechanism, but they don't include that requirement. You have to have a windshield, you have to have a rearview mirror, and you have to have appropriate tires that are free of major bumps, bulges, or breaks. Again, tires are something that the, the federal government doesn't mandate a standard on that, but the state does. So these are the, the, the equipment requirements that you would have. I know some residents who already have golf carts have been concerned that they may have to retrofit, they may have to add a lot of expensive hardware to their thing. For the most part, if you already had a, a golf cart that was street legal before the change in the law, it's probably going to meet this or you're going to only have to add one or two items. The idea is not to, is not to cost anyone money, but the state law has changed and, we've got to comply with that. Current status right now is that the operation of these vehicles on our city streets is illegal, and our safety department can't turn a blind eye to that and, and not issue tickets, so this ordinance is a way to authorize those golf carts to continue being utilized. So with that, I'll close my presentation and answer any questions that council may have for me.
Yeah, just to clarify, so we're not going to allow golf carts, for example, on far hills or Schroyer, you know, going north and south on both streets, but the golf carts will be allowed to cross over?
Yes, and that's a distinction, that is written into the ordinance. You can cross far hills, and if you're going from East Hadley to West Hadley, you can cross far hills, that's considered travel still on Hadley, you're just crossing far hills. You just can't make a right and head north up far hills when you're making that maneuver.
Okay, thank you.
So, the low-speed vehicle and underspeed vehicle, the requirements are pretty different. Is it really obvious when you have your vehicle which one you have? I mean?
I think the, there is a, sort of a, a crop of ones that are being sold new now that, that meet federal LSV standards.
Okay.
And, and the ones that I've seen, I, I don't want to speak for the whole industry, but the ones I've seen, you know, have, have bigger, knobbier tires, they, they just, they look a little beefier than the golf carts you typically see at, at a golf course. That may not be the case with all of them. But the easiest way that we'll know which set of standards applies is when a vehicle comes here to be inspected by the safety department.
Oh, okay.
They'll, they'll do the speed test, they'll, they'll test the, the max speed on a level surface to ensure that the, the.
Oh, that sounds like fun.
The golf, yeah. The golf carts, the, the underspeed vehicles will be at twenty or less and the.
Okay.
LSVs are in that twenty to twenty-five range.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And that, that is tested on a level surface, so.
Okay.
You know, you don't get the, the ski slope effect.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, you wish to proceed, Mr. Stevens?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacks. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and I move the council adopt it this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second? Sorry.
Okay, last chance for questions for Mr. Stevens. Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And finally, under legislation, I have a resolution to repeal Resolution number nine five one, restoring the Oakwood Environmental Committee to its original designation as the Oakwood Beautification Committee. This is a resolution to rename the Oakwood Environmental Committee, which was first formed in nineteen sixty-seven. At that time, it was called the Oakwood Beautification Committee, and its focus was the enhancement of city ambiance and outdoor beautification. In nineteen seventy-two, the committee was renamed the Oakwood Environmental Committee. This was not to reflect a change in the committee's mission or focus, but was seen as a name that more broadly captured the idea of outdoor beauty. In the years since nineteen seventy-two, passage, or you, I'm sorry, usage of the word environment has evolved, and it now suggests an emphasis on sustainability in the national world. Sustainability is desirable without a doubt, but this is not the primary focus of this particular committee. For that reason, the resolution I'm introducing will restore the committee's original name, the Oakwood Beautification Committee. Much of Oakwood's Beautification Committee's work is behind the scenes, but they are a dedicated group of city volunteers who are involved in many of our annual programs, some of which you, one of which you saw tonight. The Johnny Appleseed Street Tree Program, Scarecrow Row, the Holiday Lights, Holiday Decorating Awards, City Beautification Awards, Boulevard Plantings, Horticultural Seminars through the Oakwood Community Center, educational projects through the Oakwood Schools, the Smith Gardens Annual Perennial Sale, the city's Tree City USA designation, and many others. It is council's desire that the Oakwood Beautification Committee will continue its forty-one-year-plus tradition of enhancing city ambiance through landscaping and outdoor beautification, and I would move that council adopt this resolution, would ask for a second.
Second.
Any other questions regarding this change? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
That concludes our legislation. We have no staff report, however, we do have a city manager report. Mr. Klopch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Three quick things, the, our leaf collection officially ended on December twenty-first, but with the ice storm that we spoke about the last council meeting, everybody remembers that in November, we had an enormous amount of, of additional debris, and that backed us up a little bit. There's still a little bit of leaf debris in the street, and we're going to continue to pick that up in the gutter for two more weeks, but since the season is officially over, folks should not be putting any additional leaves out in the street now. But the ones that are there, we will pick them up, and beginning on Monday, January twenty-first, our code enforcement officer will again begin enforcing the, you know, the rule that we cannot have debris put into the street. So that's really just for that ten-week leaf season. Secondly, and Carol Collins is here tonight, I want to point out that our annual City of Oakwood calendar is available on our city website in a easily printable format, and we've got Smith Gardens on the cover this year, which is appropriate, given it's the, we'll be celebrating the forty-fifth anniversary of that gift to the city, and it's a neat calendar, it has all the important city meetings on there, holidays, some important school and library meetings, basketball, football games, that sort of stuff, so thank you to Carol and her staff for, again, putting that together. And the last thing I want to comment on, and the chief's going to add a few comments to, to what I say here, is you'll remember, the last time the chief spoke here in one of his semi-annual briefings to you, in fact, probably every time he, he does that, we talk about the thefts from vehicles and the fact that, 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 you know, too many of, of our Oakwood residents leave their vehicles unlocked, and not just during the day, but, but also overnight. And I am embarrassed to tell you that I did that myself last week, and after it happened to me a couple of years ago and, and my wallet was removed and the cash taken, I swore to myself I was not going to do it again, but for some reason, when I got home about a week ago, I forgot to, A, take my wallet out of the car, and B, lock the car. So the next morning, at about six forty-five AM, my wife is returning home from her morning walk with her, her friend there in the, in the neighborhood, and she sees somebody in my vehicle, and she initially thought it was me heading off to the gym for an early morning workout, which I don't do all that often in the mornings, but she, as she got closer to the car, she realized that was not me, and so she yelled from across the street, you know, something to the effect, hey, can I help you? At which time, the person in my vehicle jumped out and ran, you know, I live there on Volusia, so headed north on Glendora into the Irving area and, and gone. And so she runs in the house and tells me, I come running out, I go to my car, guess what? My wallet is gone. And after, you know, saying a few words I probably shouldn't have said privately, I grabbed a flashlight and, and of course called the safety department, but then began to look for hopefully my wallet laying somewhere. Well, to, within a few, a couple minutes, which is typical in Oakwood, our first officer arrived, and my wife was back from walking the dog at that point, and she described the person, hoodie, the color pants, and believed it was a female, and the, the call went across the radio lines, you know, and, and about fifteen minutes later, Captain Mike Jones calls me and says, I got your wallet. And it was, I share this story for a couple of reasons. One, to just plead, and the, and the chief's going to help me out here, to everybody locked their vehicle, and I'm going to recommit myself to doing it, and probably need to put a post-it note on my dashboard, but, but secondly, to, to throw out kudos again to our safety department and the, and the, what happens when you have a response time like we do? And basically, the, the speed at which that, the, the description of. And basically, the speed at which that, the description of this person went out, and then Captain Jones, who has, years ago when he joined our department, he was our detective, so he has that in his blood, he heard the description, and there was actually a person of interest that we've been kind of watching, that he thought, "Well, that's her." And we knew where this person lived, in Dayton off Wayne Avenue, so he drove down there, rounded the corner to where she lives, just at the moment that she was walking up the sidewalk to go back into her house, and he introduced himself and called her by name. She, he had never met her, so she kind of looked at him a bit startled, and he called her by name and said, "I want one thing, I want the wallet." And she put her head down and grabbed my wallet out of her pocket and gave it to Captain Jones. So I was lucky, long-winded story, but I want the chief just to remind everybody, and me included, to not forget that, you know, there are some bad people that look to do bad things in Oakwood, so.
Mr. Mayor, council, as we talk about this periodically, fortunately, we do experience, and it seems to come in bulk numbers, that when we have property crimes such as what Mr. Klopch just described, we typically don't have one or two isolated incidents. And historically, what we have found in our community is there are, whether it's an individual or individuals working together or completely separate from one another, when they do come into our community, they can, they can create a significant amount of havoc within a short period of time. And I go back to the Sean Upchurch case of a few years ago with the burglaries. We had one guy who was literally burglizing this entire city for six months before we caught him, and when we caught him, we were able to, we were able to clear 30 cases almost immediately, and this individual is one of those. You know, back in the fall, we had an article in the Oakwood Register, because we had a significant, significant number of events that, you know, got around the community, where we had multiple vehicles being entered, a bunch of items taken. In September, we made an arrest of one individual who was found at approximately 1:30 in the morning walking down the street. We stopped him, encountered, and made contact with him. He was found to have property later identified as being stolen from vehicles, and then a couple of weeks after that, we ran into the female that Mr. Klopch just described in a similar manner, who was found to have property as well. After that, those two arrests, much like what has occurred in the historical past, our incidents stopped. We went from having nothing midsummer to having a large volume of theft from vehicles from August to October, and then once we made those two arrests, we went back to a significant period of time where there were no incidents. And then right before Christmas, we started to have a couple of incidents again occur. Ms. Combs, Amy Combs, was a person of interest for us. We've subsequently linked her to multiple charges, and then when we got the description, Captain Jones was very confident of who it was, and you heard the story. It doesn't always work out that way, but to go to her house and have her walk up to the door and say, "I want the wallet," and pull out the wallet, it's a great ending for anyone who's a victim of this type of crime to get their property back that quickly. So, it's just a general reminder, you know, we are a targeted community from people outside our community, and every so often, we'll go through these patterns where we get these individuals, and, you know, so with that being said, you know, we do live in a safe community, and I understand, I'm working in a safe community, and people are very comfortable here, and that's why you can get out of your car and shut the car door and walk in, but sometimes we've got to realize there's others that want to target, you know, the fact that we're comfortable in our environment. So lock your car doors, keep your valuables, you know, out of plain sight, the same thing with your homes. A lot of people will leave, will leave front doors open with storm doors. I know it's winter, but, you know, with the nice weather, they'll leave windows open up, you know, it's a good time to air out the, air out the house, but the reality of it is, other people target on that opportunity, and that's what it is, they're a crime of opportunists, and they're just walking down the street and something sparks their interest, or they see an easy target, and that's what they go after. So it's a reminder for everybody at home, just lock your doors and keep your valuables out of plain sight. And last but not least, if you see something, say something, because a lot of times, the community may not be aware that we could be looking at one, at someone or individuals, and all we need is a description, like we got in this case. It just took us the description to put us in the right place to effect the arrest, so.
So in the "The Old Brother, We're Out There" song, she's in the jailhouse now?
She's in the jailhouse now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council comments, Councilmember Epley?
No, thank you, Your Honor, I have no comments.
All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Your Honor, I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just a couple of quick things. First thing, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our new public safety officers, Brian and Chris, I wish them all the best in their new opportunity, and wish them the best. Thank Dr. Richard Garrison for all his years of service. I've known Dr. Garrison a long time, he's a good man, and it was a pleasure working with him all these years. And finally, now that 2018 is over, I want to thank all the department heads in the city, and all the city employees for all their hard work in 2018. You know, it's not easy operating a city, and they do it on a daily basis, and, you know, I know I'm biased with my history, but at the same time, I challenge anyone to find a better, better staff and better community here in the Miami Valley. So, just like to thank them for all their work this past year.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, Councilmember Stevens always goes right down my list, basically, of all the things I wanted to say.
We've got to switch teams.
That's right. One thing I did want to add, though, is when Norv, you were describing the very first Health Commission meeting, I recognized that one of the persons there was a veterinarian. Do we have a veterinarian, or have we had a veterinarian on the Health Commission?
We do. Elizabeth Mayman is a veterinarian.
Okay. Is that a standard that we have?
No, it is not, and before she was appointed, I would say, at least looking back 20 years, we did not have a vet on it. So we have a very balanced Board of Health right now. We have a vet, we have a dentist, we have two DOs and an MD, or a nurse, I'm sorry, a nurse.
Are in, yeah. That's fantastic. Dr. May...
He retired, he moved out of Oakwood a couple of years ago, right? So we have, yeah.
Interested in it?
Yes.
Okay, and then welcome Dr. Ensley, you know, we look forward to working with you for the next 50 years.
Exactly.
And the only thing I have is if you enjoyed watching this meeting at home on Thursday, January 10th at 7:00 p.m., I will be at Wright Memorial Library informing everybody about the new federal tax law.
Oh, I saw that.
That is must-see TV, and if, I will have handouts, Brian, so, you know, if you want to come.
I'm washing my hair that night.
You're washing your hair? All right. Well, our next meeting, I can't follow that one. Our next meeting is Monday, February 4, 2019. We are adjourned.